We're good.
We're good to go? All right, first item on the agenda is...
Walking path.
The walking path.
Do you want me to start?
Sure, please do.
A committee was established with citizens and council discussed the closure of walking paths on Cudmore Harvey and Trager. The committee has met several times and came to an agreement to try out fencing that the town would pay for. This fencing was included in 2019 budget. A tender had been sent out for the supply and installation of the fencing, however, there were no bids received. Council's direction was to re-tender and have the supply and installation separate. An email was sent to the members of the committee on September 9th, 2019 advising them of the outcome of the tender and council's direction. Since then, a number of members of this committee have brought forward concerns and are no longer in fencing, in favor of the fencing and would just like the walking paths closed. I've spoken with the planning branch and they have advised that walking paths are counterintuitive to good urban neighborhood design that is now common practice. New subdivisions being developed anywhere these days include these types of walkways for the fact that it is good design rooted in proven principles of creating a more complete neighborhood for all residents, not just ones focused on vehicles.
Just, just, having said that, and I'm not saying whatever either way, but we could close it down.
Yeah.
We could. I mean, he came here when we had a meeting there, I don't know, however many months ago, and kind of was implying that we couldn't.
It's a huge process, but we could. You could.
The hearings, right?
There's a lot, there's a lot involved in closing walkways. It's not just a matter of closing the walkways and fencing them off at each end of this, at each end, as this will cause more of an issue than leaving them open. All property owners who are adjacent to the pathway would have to be on board with the cost associated at serving the walkway to close it. Construction costs associated with removing concrete, asphalt that is present, subdividing the walkway to consolidate the land with titles, and then building appropriate new fencing on properties that would absorb the walkway within entirety of their property, leaving no trace of where the path once existed. This can cost up to tens of thousands of dollars to undertake the whole process. Um, I can keep going.
All right, so where are we at right now with these walking paths? We had a hearing.
Did we?
Yeah, we had a hearing.
That's where we got the committee of three.
Yep.
That was a hearing?
That was a hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were there?
Yeah, well, it was a hearing, of course. What was the purpose of that hearing?
Closing the walking paths.
Was it? Okay.
And that's where the mayor suggested...
The committee, one more time, three and three, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And so, we tendered for the fencing and we had nobody who would buy on it.
Right, and then we re-tendered, which the information came in today, didn't get it on the agenda to discuss, but the re-tender, there was one person that bid, and it was fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars just for the supply and delivery, that did not include installation. And I believe the budget was forty thousand.
Yeah, that's considerably higher than what we first thought, right?
Thought.
Yeah.
We had no...
So, I guess, for me, it's hard to make a decision on, you know, whether to close it or keep it open when we haven't even done what we were looking at doing months ago, right? I mean, is the fence and lighting gonna fix all the problems? No. But is it gonna help fix some of the ones? I, I, I think it probably would. I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm naive to think it. So, it's kind of like, and I'm all aboard in terms of, you know, if it doesn't work, yeah, sure, I can jump on the bandwagon and shut it down. But it's tough to do when we haven't done any of those things. So, is it, like, is it impossible to get this thing, anything done here before the frost hits the ground? To get one of the fences done so that we can actually kind of see whether or not a fence and some lighting is actually gonna have any impact whatsoever on fixing any of the problems?
What kind of fence are you talking about? A fence that closes a walkway?
No, a fence to...
No, like what we've tendered up.
Yes, yes.
No, that could be done.
I don't feel...
It's gotta be done in the next month, or, that's the thing.
I don't feel that a fence is going to...
No, because...
...correct anything other than possibly protect the homeowners' fences that are there. I don't think it's going, the fence will make any garbage go away. I don't think...
I don't think it will either, I'm just saying...
The fence will make anybody who isn't supposed to be there not be there. I'm not even sure if lighting is going to do that either.
But we're blocking them off, too.
Blocking them off from what?
From... Unless somebody takes ownership of the property and starts looking after that property, just blocking them off isn't gonna do anything. Closing the paths isn't gonna do anything. You're still gonna have the garbage in there, you're still gonna have the people going in there that will climb over, get there in some way, shape, or form. They're using it for a purpose. They're gonna keep on using it. It's no different than the back lanes uptown or anywhere else in the town. If it's a problem area, it's gonna stay a problem area until somebody goes forward and does something to create a regular... What am I looking for? Where you're regularly going through that area to patrol it. And town employees regularly going through that area to clean it. That's the only thing that's gonna solve anything.
Their day ends at five and at six, though, and that's, I don't think, when the major problems are happening.
No, but if you clean it up in the morning, then it's clean for the day. If you patrol it at night, you got less chance of it happening.
It's not, it's not so much that the actual path is dirty. It's the fact that people are throwing garbage over people's fences, they're breaking fences, they're putting graffiti on people's fences. Those are the issues. The garbage is, I think, secondary. You know what I mean? Like, the bigger issues are...
Rocks that being thrown at people's fences.
Yeah, exactly, stuff like that.
Yeah. I can name a half a dozen places in the last few weeks that have nothing to do with that walking path, that have had a lot of broken windows, vehicles gone through, everything else. What are we gonna do? Close the streets down around them or shut down the back lanes so that they can? I mean, it's not, from what I've, what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, the walking path per se isn't the problem. It's the security of the people in the area and they would like to see more patrolling, more security, being looked after a bit. Right now, yeah, the walking paths, a lot of people are blaming it, but it's going on all over, all over our town. It's not just the walking paths. It's anywhere that's dark. You have one street light going back there, one light that's functionable. You got people that are using that light in order to use their needles. That's what happens. And then they're causing problems by throwing, yes, rocks through people's windows, but they're also doing it to cars on so many other streets.
Young person.
End of the trailer court, or new trailer court.
Young person part of it all is we've asked the RCMP to do more and it's not getting any better, either way. So, fence, gates, whatever, whatever. You have to have the presence of, of somebody out there doing the patrolling. And, and like, we've sat here many times and we've talked and we've asked the staff sergeant about, you know, additional people, additional patrolling, additional this, additional that. And it's like the mayor just said, we were willing to put up a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to hire an RCMP officer to work for us and we're told, no, they're gonna work for them, not us. So, so in the whole thing, it comes down to five o'clock during, five o'clock in the day, the town employees all go home. The town is secured by the RCMP and the job isn't getting done. So, the homeowners over there, and I understand their, their qualms about damages and everything else and everything else, and they want security. But how do you, other than hiring additional forces, community safety officers or Dakota Jibway when they come here, trying to get one of their people? That, that's what it's gonna take. You have to have some presence there to, to look after it. But I, I don't know how we go forward. It's just, it's, it's a mind-boggling thing and...
I think we just focus in on the stuff we have control over. And it's really not, I don't think, our, you know, it's easy to sit back and say, your RCMP aren't doing anything, but if you look at the number of calls they get in a run of a night, are they gonna go to the rock that was thrown over your fence? And, or are they gonna go to someone who's getting assaulted? So, I'm not saying downplaying that kind of stuff on my own, but it's, it's a tough thing. I just like trying to focus in on the things that we can, we can, we can actually have an impact on. And I know one of the things that I voted for was to spend some money because I heard in previous years, in the last council, that, I mean, money was tight and they were looking at the fencing or some sort of a solution, but they didn't have it. So, we said that we would and here we are, we haven't done that. So, I think we need to go through with that and whether or not it, again, is not gonna fix all the problems, but at least it tells the residents in the area, well, at least I don't have to fix my fence. I've given up painting it anyway. I don't have to fix the palings on it and there's gonna be some new lights on either end. So, at least they're doing something. We can still do what we've always been doing and advocating for more of a RCMP presence there and ask for foot patrols or whatever else. But, I mean, this we haven't, we can decide on.
We've been working on it for eight months.
Okay, so the, because of the scheduling, so the fence quotes came in. They'll be on the agenda in two weeks from now? That's how that works, right? And that's just for supply?
That's just for supply, the fifty-eight thousand, six hundred.
And we haven't sent out the tender for install? Oh, no, I guess we can't until...
It was the, it was sent out as both, right? Supply and install, and you could bid on both, and I think they just bid on supply. That's how it was supposed to go on.
And we couldn't do the install? Town of the Paw couldn't do the install with our workers?
Your workers?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Okay, so originally, we sent out a tender for, for both, supply and install. We did get the mill bearings, which was disappointing. Sam said that he didn't have the capacity to do these installs and there was concerns about underground wiring pathways, specifically hydro lines that run right down the middle and very difficult to work with. On hand, digging would be required and he just didn't have the capacity to do that. We, we did send out a tender for the supply this time, knowing that depending on what we got back, that may change install. We were hoping to get a local installer, potentially maybe avoid the tender process altogether. And so, I suspect it'll be higher. But, no, there was no, it wasn't sent out as a supply and install at the same time because we wouldn't have the power to...
I know, to, yeah, let's say, this is why you're, installing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, now, let's talk about closing the paths. So, we held a hearing back in February 11th. My notes indicate that we had twenty-eight people there. They weren't all in favor of closing, they weren't all in favor of leaving open. So, what happens next?
So, do you guys...
Do we have to have another hearing?
You guys can leave the call.
It, it falls completely on us, it doesn't know outside authorities?
Because we've already held a hearing, we can do whatever we want.
But if you close the paths, you need to go through the process and someone has to purchase them, you gotta do the subdivision and...
And what if we temporarily close them? A trial period of closing it?
And who's going to look after them? Because there is gonna be stuff thrown inside and if that's, yeah, if that's council's direction, that somehow we're gonna have to have access for town employees to get in there to do the cleaning. You can try it, you can do a temporary closure if you want.
So, temporary closure would be just gating them out each year for the time being?
Basically.
What kind of gating?
I know we're committed to doing what we haven't been doing to keep them clean anymore.
What would you attach it to?
Go to the axle or something.
Take it out to train line tracks?
Drill holes in, drill holes in.
I don't, I don't know what other option we have at this point without, because if we go to permanently close them, like Jen said, we have to get them surveyed, we have to sell them, all that sort of thing.
So...
Okay, so, all right, I feel for the residents, I really do. So, Trevor had a valid point. We haven't done what we said we would do. We've been trying. Did, Dennis, did they ever fix the lights on your street?
Uh, just last week, the light.
Well, they did, finally.
The hydro was there and did the, fixed that light.
So, you can see them now?
Yeah.
It's still working?
It's still working. My backyard is all lit up.
Has it been better?
Uh, no. Just two nights ago, we had an incident, some kids throwing stuff at our house, I just, but, and that's, I don't know more to say, like, we've had our window broken this year and it's every weekend or something.
I was hearing what I had to say. Do you find that that area is predominantly worse than any of the other areas down at that end of town? Because of the walking path?
I would not ask that. Like, the thing is, is they, they do something and they, they have an excuse. It doesn't matter where you can't. And I should chase down two kids the other night and they were thrown, of course, in the United States, wasn't it? But what do you do in that? And we did call a case, but I don't know the kids, so that's, that's, if I had names, it'd be a lot different, but I don't know them and, and, yeah.
I understand. I just, I seen the same thing happening uptown. In the uptown area where they're going down the back lane and smashing things the other day, and I did the same thing. I chased them down, caught them down by the bank. There was thirteen of them and the oldest one is probably fifteen years old. And they're just kids, but they're wrecking stuff. That's why I was wondering if it's because of walking paths, it's any worse or if it's just basically the same as the rest of the town, right?
I've been on there since two thousand and six and this is the worst I've seen it since last year.
Six.
Okay, so, all right, here's, so, we're gonna review the quotes in two weeks. All right, everybody has two weeks to think about this some more and then let's make a decision. Okay. Because it's over budget. We have an op, like, it's, this is a tough one, right? Because we have a responsibility to the residents who are immediately impacted. But when I'm looking through some of the comments that I wrote down of people who were at the meeting, they had some concerns as well. And this is gonna be a tough one. So, in two weeks from now, let's review the tenders. I'd like to know if all the lights on the walking paths are now working?
Well, could they check them?
They're all working now?
Okay, so I don't...
Okay.
Um, in regards to, say, Dennis's fence with the walking path. So, since there's a walking path there, are there fences only allowed to be six feet as well?
Unless anybody, you could apply for a barrier.
So, nobody, nobody has a fence taller than six feet down there? No barions have been granted or requested?
I'd have to look back.
I'm wondering if that's, you know, you can throw something up in the air and it's gonna hold a fence regardless.
Somewhere a little more than six feet, because they put the lattice stuff on the top that I was saying, but...
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know.
I've never looked for one in my life or something.
Like, the problem here really is irresponsible parents. And I'm so sick and tired of having to fix up after irresponsible parents.
Yeah.
If you have a kid, take care of your kid. It's getting to be enough.
Know where he is, where she is.
So, we're gonna talk about it in two weeks, Dennis. And parents, where's your kid? Look North, three point two.
Jim Scott is with Look North and would like to set up a meeting to meet with council. Look North is a movement by northerners for northerners to grow the economy in northern Manitoba with a long-term vision and plan to unleash the economic potential of the north for generations to come. Look North is deeply rooted in the principle that people of the north best understand their needs. Only through extensive engagement with both indigenous and non-indigenous communities, businesses, industry, and labor leaders can we create a vision of growth and prosperity for northern Manitoba that is inclusive of all perspectives. Does council want to meet with Mr. Scott and when would you like to meet with him?
Uh, yes. For me, December. And I'm not being facetious.
No, I know you're not.
I'm so busy the next six weeks. Uh, I would say December. Early.
Um, I believe December second, we have Board of Revisions. We could do it right after Board of Revisions, because that's not a meeting night.
Yep.
Yes, Board of Revision is at six P M. on the second, if you're right.
Yep.
Okay.
December.
So, is this, not to spoil his presentation, but are they, are they a funding group or are they just like a guidance group, like a...
I feel best to explain that one to you.
December.
The CDC should be working closely with them.
Okay.
Okay, CDC EDO.
I believe you were gonna speak to this.
Yeah, so, if you, we read through it here is that we, we sent out a job description for the potential EDO and we, we, the Town of the Paw and CDC requires a support person for economic growth, right? So, like I had said in the, was talking about our last meeting, it's tough to get some things done when you don't have the one employee that you, that you really need. So, so we, if you look through the job description, we're trying to really find something that's gonna fit everybody and we're looking for your input, obviously, into the job description. Plus, if you look at our proposal here, is that the Town of the Paw, it'd be hired by the Town of the Paw with the understanding that there would be a secondment and that person would be, you know, answerable to the CDC. But, but I guess the, our biggest reason for kind of doing this is because, you know, it's hard to find someone when you're like, well, we might have funding next year, we're not really sure. Please come with us. We hope, you know, when you're really gonna be good, it's, you know, someone who's really good in this position is not gonna go to a, a one-year term position. This kind of secures things up a little bit. And if CDC for next week decides, yeah, everyone quits, then we could put in the secondment agreement that that person, if they are, you know, the town agrees upon it and they're a good person to have, they could go back with the town and do the same similar position. And we, again, throughout this issue sheet here, you know, there's alignment needs to be with the Kelsey Planning District and the Town of the Paw, that are our goals and things like that. And obviously, we have two representatives to make sure that, that happens anyway. So, yeah, so we're just kinda putting this out here just because it's obviously, you know, a budgetary item that requires some support and we'd obviously have to agree on what the job description would be and we'd also have to agree on what that secondment agreement would look like. I'm not a, an expert in either of the two, so we would all need to work together to figure out. There are models out there. I know C K P has one with their, forgive me, with the, I'm gonna say, Natase Kapow, I think it is, it's called, or Forest Street. They basically second someone out to work with all the First Nations groups to, to work out some securing for harvesting and things like that. And there are others out there. I'm sure there may be even some out there involving CDCs, if you look, if you look close enough, or hard enough. So, I don't know what everybody thinks of that and this.
In terms of, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I'm just gonna say in terms of funding, um, the funding from this year.
Yeah.
That was provided, you must have the majority of that still.
Yeah, we have a fair amount and then, so in November, we'll do a, we're gonna do a presentation to everybody, basically saying, what we have, this is how much, this is how much we're looking for, things like that. So, I don't think we're gonna be asking for, you know, everything and that, just, we do have money left over. We were actually, in our last meeting, like I said, we're discussing hiring someone part-time to get some of these things done because we do have funds available. So, I don't owe myself to the exact amount that I'm gonna look for, but, or looking for, but in the November meeting, when we present, we'll, we'll discuss that or tell you what, what the...
Can I ask her a question? So, when we provide the CDC with the funding, do we give it as a lump sum?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We have in this case, yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Generally speaking, I think it's a good idea. I think we would have to hammer out a few things about it, but I think generally speaking, it's a good idea. Have you guys worked on a budget?
We're, we're kinda doing that right now because we're, we wanna, I'm not sure if Andre had said anything yet. He was going to about setting up a, a meeting time fairly soon here. We're actually hammering out who's going to present what in, when we present to council. But, yeah, but no, we don't have an exact amount, so we will.
Just my thoughts.
Yeah.
Uh, my thoughts are that it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Generally, but we should have a budget to help make the decision.
Oh, for sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I would, my thoughts would be to carry on in principle.
Okay.
And when we get some hard numbers and...
Yeah, and that's really what we're kinda looking for because we don't wanna kind of continue on the road if there's kind of, ah, I don't really like that idea, can't see it happening. And, and I know, like, there were some issues that were, you know, with the CDC, I think in the past, it was similar to something like that where they were seconded and who is reporting to who, but there wasn't really an official, like, a good agreement put together. And I, I think it can work if it's, if we're all in agreement. So, so, okay, so it's good, I'll bring it back to the, to the CDC and...
Bill and learn, judge, you guys have...
Well, I think going forward, over the next few years, in, in the community here, with the CDC, the, uh, the Kelsey Planning District and the community, I, I think it's a position that's gonna be well needed. And we're, we're gonna have to have that player to, to have stuff happen here.
Yeah, as of right now, we have, um, nobody in our community working on this development. Whether it's, right now, it should be at the CDC and if the CDC isn't something that moves forward, then at least it's something that, that can be at the Town of the Paw. So, we need to move forward with it in some way, shape, or form. So, I think that this is definitely the right way of going about this. It gives people applying for the job more security and it gives the town a little bit more comfort in making sure that we have economic development of one way, shape, or form.
Larry, you're good with it?
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
At least till we find out it was budgeted.
All right, Finance and Administration, Utility Deficit Recovery.
Graham's gonna speak on this.
I don't think this is a real surprise to anybody, having seen the financial statements. The number, after a few adjustments, the pub likes to work in there for their own work, is actually just a little bit less than we had on our financial statements. In my mind, it's directly related to the well failure that we had. The extra cost for bringing in the pumps, the extra cost for rental equipment, unforeseeable. Now, historically, we've also had a number of deficits because our rates have been too low. That could have played a part in here as well. Our rates are going up year after year. We have, our rate of growth, I think we have one more bump up in 2020 and then we'll have to go back to the board and look at all our numbers again and see where we're at, so. But again, we're working on an old system with a lot of old infrastructure. I, I can't see this getting better. I see it getting worse. I think that there's gonna be more significant costs as we continue these repairs and hopefully get ahead of it.
Okay, and you're recommending we take it out of our surplus?
Yeah, we, when I first came in, there was, I had a great idea. I was gonna try and do this through a rate increase. I was told very politely but firmly from pub that they weren't even gonna review it because they had given us the rate increases over the three-year term. We do have a significant surplus based on the capital we put in. There's plenty of room to absorb the loss. It's the least, there's the least effect on actual taxpayers or taxpayers using this method. That's what I would suggest.
So, you noted in here that the working capital surplus of two point five million is not cash?
No, it, so there's cap, there's capital in there as well, right? There's a, there's a few numbers that come together. I can certainly provide you that information if you're interested. But they have a calculation they have that comes out with the, you know, a balance of, you know, assets over liabilities that they like to consider in this process and what they're willing to let you absorb in terms here, so.
Oh, okay.
And then our, our pub number, the actual deficit number, gets adjusted by grants that we put in that are amortized over a certain number of years and accounting mumbo jumbo that nobody likes to listen to me talk about. But, yeah, that's, the basis is, you know, the four options we have... and accounting mumbo jumbo that nobody likes to listen to me talk about, but, um, yeah, that's, the basis is, uh, you know, the four options we have, we can take it out of tax, which, there's kind of a disconnect there between the taxpayers and the ratepayers. We can bump up the rate, but you have to apply to pub to do it, and again, they're probably not gonna let us do that. Um, we can, uh, take it as, what's that, fourth one?
Uh, increase with the rate rider, uh, draw down accumulated cash surplus, withdraw reserve funds, and increase.
Oh, reserve funds, sorry, that's the longest we're getting, reserve funds, uh, again, because of the upcoming balloon stuff, seems like a poor choice for us.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna need that money, sorry. From a town controller perspective, it's probably the best for us too, because we're not dishing cash out.
Yeah.
That's what I would recommend, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you. All right, uh, payroll and accounts.
We'll need a resolution for pay period twenty in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Town of the paw general checks in the amount of three million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-one cents, I'll explain why. E F Ts in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, there's a number of checks, one check for Canadian craft in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-six is the last grant. Um, there was one for global airport training services in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. This was airport winter maintenance training, which was approved through tender, through a tender, and it was resolution twenty nineteen, one fifty-seven. Uh, and one check for two million, twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixteen cents for Kelsey School Division, which is their taxes. We collect the tax, they're, collect their money for their budget through our property taxes. Same with the one for the public fi, school finance board, five hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and three dollars and ninety-nine cents, that's for the same thing. Or for the federal school, pardon me, for public school, the other one was for Kelsey School Division. Northern Lights paving, sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents, this was for the paving on constant. A M M Trading Company, this was fuel in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Um, then there was a check for fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents to cha, paw chamber. The paw and district chamber of commerce, this was a destination marketing grant for Christmas lights. Winnipeg Airport Services, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, this was for our contract with Losco, to look after the airport for us. A B C Fire and Safety, eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, that was for turnout gear. Simco Refrigeration, nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, that was for arena compression overhaul, and then for the arena startup for the ice tree, or ice plant, for calibration of a, sorry, I can't read. Oh no, it's just for calibration of all the stuff getting ready. Jeans Telecoms was three thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, that's photocopy service contracts for three photocopiers and fire department radios. Morgan Fuels was eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, airport fuel, and then, I can't say, it's just, uh.
Well, it's a Christian.
Thank you, contracting, that was for sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, which was limestone, and that was a tender, which was passed by resolution twenty nineteen dash one twenty-four. Those were the ones, the bigger ones that.
To North Towing, does this mean that we are removing vehicles?
Yes, we are.
Does this mean we're handing out tickets as well as removing vehicles?
Yes, we are.
Are we recovering fees of us?
Invoices will be me, sent out, yeah.
Yeah, okay, are the tickets for issued? I guess it's early now.
They get towed, they can't get their vehicle back.
How long do you have to pay a bill? Or not a bill, a ticket, like if you were to get a parking ticket, is there a time limit set on it? There has to be.
Yeah, it's right on the ticket, you remember, I'll hand it. I think it's fourteen days.
Okay.
It works that if the ti, the ticket's fifty, if you come in, I think in fourteen days, it's only twenty-five.
Okay.
Then if it's fourteen days, it's fifty, then if, I'd have to look at a ticket, I'm, I, I can't remember offhand, sorry. But there is, it, there's increments in timelines.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on that? Okay, four, three, additions and deletions.
Once again, we have another set of deletions, additions for the twenty nineteen tax rule. Every year Swan River Assessment Branch provides municipalities with additions and deletions to the tax rule, and council must pass a resolution accepting these changes. The following additions and deletions for twenty nineteen tax rule as of October second, twenty nineteen. So these are in addition now, so twenty nineteen additions in the amount of six thousand, seventy-four dollars, deletions in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Difference of this submission is an increase of four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is a total so far now of four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Revised tax bills will be sent out to those affected properties, and we need a resolution approving this, so we're, we're going in the right direction.
Good.
Resolutions required.
Yep. All righty, how are you in a sign?
During the twenty nineteen budget process, council approved the repair of the sign in the K R C parking lot, and the recreation director and maintenance director are now looking for approval for additional work, and if council is interested in a new logo. This additional work will cost approximately thirty-five hundred dollars, which would be an upgrade to an L E D lighting system. This is not an upgrade to a digital system. This type of system would be, would cost approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. With the repairs of the existing sign, the faceplates have to be redone, and the company doing the work has asked if count, if, if the K R C would like a new logo. This was not something that was considered at the time. A few ideas for a new logo were sent to council with a number of suggestions and improvements recommended. Um, pardon me, so Amber, Amber has provided copies of the new logo and one, and one of the old logo. She would like to know if council, if council would like to do. Is council in favor of thirty-five thousand dollar upgrade to an L E D lighting system? Thirty-five hundred, sorry, thank you. I did so well with the, with the.
Yeah, no, I'm good with it, and I'm good with the logo.
With the new one, or you like?
I like the new one as well.
Yeah.
This one, council's in favor of this one? Over what's there now?
I don't feel that, um, this is a decision that I really need to be in on when it comes to choosing signs, that kind of stuff, um. I, I just feel that it's, it's not something that I need to do, but I do really, really like the option that they presented.
Okay, so we're going with the thirty-five hundred and the new logo.
We're not doing the.
We're not doing.
Okay, thirty-five hundred.
Agreement?
New logo.
Yeah, I see nodding heads.
I'll do a resolution, thank you.
All right, uh, four, five, Sam Waller Property Taxes and Audit Fees.
I will start this, and Graham will probably jump in on this one. The Sam Waller Museum would like, like the town of the paw to commit to covering the fixed expenses at the Sam Waller Museum. This includes the utilities, property taxes, and audit, and to continue to cover staff wages and benefits. I believe Trevor alluded to this during the council meeting. In twenty twelve, the Sam Waller Museum was charged the property taxes and audit fees since, prior to that, it was included in the town's budget. The rationale for this was to determine the actual cost of the facility. So the town did provide the monies to offset those costs in that year, but in future years, the Sam Waller Museum paid these costs without an increase to operating budget, so they just had to include it in their budget. The town commit, so the museum would like the town to commit to covering the fixed expenses for the Sam Waller Museum, and I'll let Graham go into further. I'm not sure what the rationale, other than an actual cost of operating the facility.
So did, did their grant go up in two thousand and twelve and then go down in twenty thirteen?
No, nothing changed, the grant, the grant amount's never changed.
Oh, it's never changed, oh, okay, so we just included the.
We made them pay for it, but they had to cut something out of the budget, technically, to compensate for it at the time.
Okay.
Kinda feel like this is a non-issue, that, that the museum is just another piece of the town, uh, whatever their needs are, the budget you guys approve, um, we kick in almost all of the funding. So whether we pay for those expenses internally in the town, or they show it on their budget, it all gets recorded in the same place, it comes from the same pot.
But I guess the issue is, though, is that you don't have the money to spend it, and you're asking for, it looks like what it's looking for, extra stuff, when it's not extra, because we, the, the board feels that, you know, that it might not necessarily add up to being much. Uh, but, I mean, some taxes and some other stuff, it's, that's another, you know, we all talk about how great and all, how awesome the museum is, and and then they're trying to, she's applying for grants, she's doing this, she's doing that, and, uh, it does, at the end of the day, three or four grand makes a big difference to their bottom line, and they just feel that it was done. I mean, to, to get a better handle on how much it costs, for sure, but, but then that had to come out of somewhere, right?
She not representing her numbers properly in her budget, annual budget, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm just saying, so that, so that when the budget was done in twenty twelve, right? So now you've got to pay the taxes, okay, so then where does that money come from? I do up a budget?
Right, right, but are you suggesting that they need more money, then? Wouldn't they just apply for that as part of their budget request? And then just talk, move on, their budget request is.
But, but, I mean, yeah, I guess we could, but what I, what we're getting at is that, when it's, when these things weren't here, why do we have to ask for extra money when we feel that these things could be, could be taken on by the town to pay for? Then I don't have to go and, we don't have to beg and plead to have a, this program, that program, and that program, we can, we can have it anyway, because these costs are covered.
I'm, I'm just a little confused, so, so if, um, if the, if we, if we pay the taxes and those other things, right? So if it's twenty grand.
Yeah.
And we reduce their budget by twenty grand in twenty twenty, wh- what's the difference?
But I'm, I'm seeing.
They don't want the budget reduced.
Yeah, we don't want the budget reduced.
Oh, so they're looking for more money?
Yes, yes.
Oh!
Yes, because, yes, in essence.
Which could be represented in their budget.
So they want the budget to stay the same, but now we pay the taxes, then we.
Yes, 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 yes.
No, it's just a shuffling of the numbers.
Yes.
So, she could really just add that into her budget?
Also, so one of the issues here, sorry, one of the issues here is that, uh, the museum has an independent board, and it has registered charity status. So their audit really should be represented in their accounting documentation. Um, we could pay it, but it would still be considered income to them, in theory.
Yeah.
Um, the same thing for all their expenses.
We can cover everything, and we, they, they still record it as an income.
Shouldn't this be deferred to budget?
I agree.
That's what I'm saying.
Twenty twenty budget?
I mean, I, I mean, and that's, I, I guess thi, this is just, I mean, we're, they're not gonna make a decision, I don't think we're gonna make a decision around it now. But it's one of those things, let's have that conversation, get it out there, this is what the museum would like, and then they come every year and do their budget thing.
Presentation, yeah.
So it's, so it's out there, and it's, it's something people can think about, versus them having their, and then it's, oh yeah, okay.
How much money are we talking?
Like with the taxes and, what were we talking about, the taxes and what, so we, and water? I think it was like thirty-five, thirty, four grand or something.
Four grand, yeah, it's not the, to cover staff wages and benefits, that's.
Yeah, and then if you, if you go into the, uh, heating costs, the hydro, I think that was twenty-five, I believe.
Thousand?
Yeah.
Thousand?
I think that was twenty-five thousand.
So they're looking for an extra thirty, thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, let's, let's defer it to budget.
Okay.
Now we have an idea of what's coming.
And, and, and the other reason why I bring this up, and I, I said, and then we were sitting on our budget, we all kinda chuckled, because we do our budget, we talk about these massive numbers, and then we all laugh, because we all go to the same page. Grants to organizations and look to see where we can trend with that, right? That's where we go to, and it's nickel and diamond, so this is another reason why we wanna bring it up.
Okay, so it's on the table for budget?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, uh, four, six, letter from M M R. So they're looking to see if anybody wants to schedule a fifteen-minute meeting with any of the ministers.
Cabinet ministers will be available to meet with municipalities at the annual convention, at the A M M convention in November. At the Keystone, uh, any detail, or detail on topics you wish to discuss with the cabinet ministers to facilitate a more comprehensive discussion? If you have more than one topic to discuss with the minister, please rank them in order of priority.
When's your deadline?
Deadline is October twenty-eighth.
Agenda's out yet?
Nope, still to be announced. So if you want to meet with any particular ministers and to discuss what, I need to know. You can even just email me, and I can do some research.
Minister of Health, Plan for the Paw.
Minister of Health.
Minister of Highways.
To discuss.
Highway two eighty-three.
Health, would be doctors, right?
Hmm, they're plan, not necessarily doctors. Where's our plan?
I deserve, the highways plan.
Yep.
Highways, two eighty-three, so.
Did, uh, is there any point to, for the Minister of Justice, okay, and I don't, I think we talked about, you brought it up, when, with the homeless and the other issues going on, that we should meet with, uh, let us homeless, you know, being, you know, intoxication, things about working on a plan so that some individuals are done with it in different ways. We're, we're gonna ask for kind of our local round, I guess, to, to meet, maybe also with the judges and see if we could. Uh, well, I don't wanna sound like I'm heartless and lock them up and throw them away, but I think what we're doing right now is, yeah, it's, it's, what we're doing isn't really working either, right? So.
Sure, we could.
Yeah, that would be a.
Justice?
Or even with the Minister of Justice, if, you know, something could even be brought up about the Young Offenders Act.
Yeah.
That possibly the Young Offenders Act needs to be changed or modified. No, it's not provincial at all, but possibly, you know, they could, just to get it out.
Well, we can have a Juvenile Protection Act in Nanataqua. It's a change of the Young Offenders Act, but it's a Juvenile Protection Act. What you, that you put in place, that you're, what you're doing is you're protecting that town, you're saying that you're protecting them by taking them off the street. It's a different way of selling.
You could bring that one up, then.
Yeah, okay.
Just the way they came up.
Did we wanna, well, we don't know, but do we want to put the Minister of Culture? No?
No, yeah, well, that, I wouldn't know, because, no, that's quite, it really is.
But even if, if, like.
We won't make a decision until all those minions give us approval.
Okay.
Something else in regards to Good North as a whole is the fact that, um, there aren't any rest stops to get anywhere. It doesn't necessarily, people may not think that it impacts the town of the paw at all, but if people know that there is a really, really long ways to go to get to the paw, and there's no, no washrooms, that's something else, too. I'll send you a list, and then you guys can go through them as you choose.
Okay, all right. All right, four point seven, committee appointments, it's that time of year, folks. Oh, that's what it says, too.
I got your mind.
That time of year, uh, yeah, so every, once a year, we pick our committees, we rejig our committees, we. Do that, so.
That also includes deputy, if you want.
Yeah, so, um, why don't we do this for the next meeting? Everybody think about the committees you're on, any changes you might like to make. Um, usually the deputy mayor's a one-year posting, so there'd be for another deputy mayor. And, uh, we'll make some decisions next meeting.
Yep.
Okay? Little parking lot upgrade.
The op, pardon me, the paw airport would like to upgrade the level of service in the terminal parking lot. Currently, only twelve parking stalls have operational block heater outlets. They would like to proceed with the quote from Travel Electrical to upgrade Row Two during the twenty nineteen fiscal year, and in twenty twenty, will plan to complete the upgrades to Row One and implement a paid parking system. These plans have been accelerated, accelerated from their original timeline to address this in twenty twenty budget, as Kuwaiton Air has approached the paw airport for a long-term lease for power parking stalls. The service terminal building parking lot has not been addressed since twenty fifteen. They, she's, uh, their airport manager has provided a bunch of information and more details.
Do they have money in their budget for this?
Uh, yes, they do, um. Sorry. Row one is, sorry, stage one would be. Pardon me. If we proceed with the upgrade of Row Two, the airport contract abductical airside G L code will be higher than budgeted for this year. I've talked to Graham, and there's sufficient funds in the airport reserve, and if, if they were. and if, if they were to move forward with Row 2 this year. And then Row 1 is to be discussed in 20, for 2020 budget.
So Row, the first one would be what, 7358?
Yes. 7,358. To do, to install block heater outlets in Row 2, upgrade cabinet current standards, repair existing block heater outlets by upgrading the cabinet to current standards and repair services inside. Quote cost was $7,358.
And $5,000, that was to come as kind of a prepayment, right? And then after that, $11 a month?
Yes, that's right. That's when this, that's once this is done.
So that's Row 2?
I think that's where she's doing her recouping. That's, that's how she rationalizes.
So Row, Row 1 was double the price?
There it is.
Yeah.
Yes. Because Row, because Row 1 would be stage 2, which there's route, asphalt and parking lot. Link power to Row 1 because there's no actual power in Row 2. Or there's no, no power in Row 1, so they'd have to get the power from the back row. Install block heater outlets in Row, on Row 1. So Row 2 is stage 1. Row 1 is stage 2. It's so confusing.
You were totally getting me on a lot of back and forth wonder what the heck.
And stage 2 is...
Those that you can carry to a car.
Stage 2 is $15,000, which is for 2020 budget. They want to move forward with Row 2, stage 1 at $7,358 this year.
And they have enough money in their reserve.
And they have enough money in the reserve fund to do it.
Sure.
Yeah, they're the, they're the managers and if they have the money in the budget.
And most airports have, do you have paid parking?
Yeah.
Probably one of the only ones that don't, you know.
Sir, but I, like, that's not being addressed here though, right? The paid park?
No, they, they had talked about it before.
This is the least that they're...
Yeah, it's a thing in order to do it, yeah.
Okay, just, just...
Which will, it will come eventually.
Yeah, okay.
So is the $11, sorry, but is $11 per month also paid parking in the summertime or just throughout the winter?
I don't know what her intentions are. That will have to be an agreement we do with, a separate agreement we do with...
I don't even know how $11...
With Kiwi and Air once it's sold.
Yeah, it would be...
Well, pretty much.
Well, yeah, but $11 to park in the wintertime is what?
But if you're paying it in the summer too.
Yeah.
Additional power to the parking lot will be recouped with the paid parking system in 2020.
For a week.
Okay, so resolution then to move forward?
Yep.
With phase 1?
Yep.
All righty. That's it?
That is it.
Oh my goodness. We have a few things in camera. There'll be no, uh, business coming up.
New business for next meeting?
Oh, yeah, new business next meeting. I'm sorry. There you go. New business next meeting. Um, let's talk about budgets.
Budgets?
Yep.
Talk about airport parking.
Budgets next meeting.
Yep.
We'll start talking about budgeted, so if you can attend, Graham, next meeting.
Sir, you set deadlines for that timeline for budgets? You didn't?
Not officially, so...
Oh, not officially, November 15th and something else over there?
Yep, so we'll talk about it at our next meeting and we'll set the deadlines and we'll get started. But we want, uh, we want to have our budgets done much, much sooner this year. Much sooner. Anything else? New business next meeting? No? Well, you guys got until Wednesday at noon? Wednesday at noon, in case something comes up.
Next Wednesday, not this one.
Not this one.
Not tomorrow. Please, not tomorrow.
Hmm, not the weekend.
Okay, uh, somebody needs to resolve us.
To resolve that we do now move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee of the whole with Mayor Jakes in the chair to discuss matters regarding, requiring our attention.
Thanks for coming, guys.